Like to call the Town of Somerville Planning Commission for June 16, 2025 order. Our first order of business will be approval of minutes from our meeting of May 19th. Are there any additions, corrections need be made to those? Hearing none, except them is published. Next order of business or public hearings. Intold me folks for a couple of few ground rules, a lot of you here, we're glad to see you. We want to hear what you have to say. We would like you to keep it, you know, if a person gets up ahead of you and says what you want to say, acknowledge that and let's go on. We don't need to hear a lot of reputation. Be reminded that the public hearing is for you folks to tell the commission what you feel or what you want to know about this. Please no cat calls, no disparaging remarks to other speakers. Give everybody a chance and we'll listen to all of you. And each speaker is allowed three minutes. Having said that, our first public hearing is a petition by Rutherford Prettyman Smith and Virginia Prettyman's driver to annex TMS number 1440000082, located at Luton Drive in King Charles Circle and totaling approximately 4.26 acres, currently zoned transitional residential district in Dorchester County and requested be zoned multifamily residential following annexation into the town of Somerville's municipal limits, Council District 5.
Is the petitioner here? Tell us what you with me, I have Jamie Williams, who's our land acquisition manager and Aaron Schmidt P. with Seaman White side. We're asking to annex his own multifamily in the town Somerville. We actually were brought to this area because of the parcel to, let's say, the north of the property, which is currently in the town of Somerville and is zoned multifamily residential already. We have that parcel under contract to buy. And when we were analyzing this this property, we saw that in order to provide an environmentally sensitive and valuable property, we needed the parcel to the south, which is the one we're asking to annex in. The parcel to the north has the sawmill branch floodplain on that piece and also has a large area of jurisdictional wetlands. As I said, it is in the town of Somerville and does allow multifamily by right. But to develop on that piece of parcel property will require us to do a great deal of environmental, be very, very environmentally invasive. So we decided to pursue annexing this piece into the town and asking for like zoning, our intent is to abandon the property line between the two. If we were to get the annexation, we're not doing this to increase the yield. But what we're doing is it is so we can pull away from the floodplain and the wetlands into the Highland area adjacent to the Luden Drive area. This parcel is adjacent to the newly open Berlin G Mars Parkway, which is a municipal investment that we're focusing on. And there is a signalized intersection at Luton Drive and the new Parkway. We feel like the the property will is a good infill development. It will bring revenue in the form of taxes and impact fees without extending services beyond where these services are exist since this is already in the town Somerville. The intent of the project, one, if these two parcels are able to be combined, we will preserve 70% of the combined parcel as open space. We'll only be concentrating up towards the corner. And this will, like as I said, preserve the floodway, the jurisdictional wetlands and with Seaman White size stormwater design being able to provide a improved stormwater. We will be required by the town Somerville to do a traffic analysis as part of the development process. That consultant will provide recommendations for any improvements that are required, including access design, signalization timing and any turn lanes that would result from the traffic impact. We're not asking for zoning that doesn't exist in the area. As you can see with the zoning map that's on the screen, about 65% of the properties in around this note is owned multifamily residential. And there are actually two existing multifamily developments within a quarter of a mile of this piece of property. As I said, additionally, the piece of property that we're adjacent to in the town of Somerville, which we have under contract is zoned multifamily residential and would allow the use by right. Appreciate y'all's time tonight. Jamie, Aaron, you have Aaron would like to add.
Just a few additional comments. My name is Aaron Schmidt. I work for Seaman Whiteside and Associates here in Somerville. Just an additional comments to what Mr. Andy had to say. Some of the things that we would be looking to do, one is paying attention to where those wetlands and where the floodplain is and making sure that the development itself stays as far out of that or as less impact as possible to continue that environmental friendly aspect. One thing we do want to do is continue to work with the town on what it looks like. If this parcel were to be annexed and the property were to move forward with the project, what it looks like for interconnectivity to the Sawmill Branch Trail, which sits on this side of Sawmill Branch in order to allow pedestrian interconnectivity, both foot and bike, in an effort to maybe reduce some of the trips that come from this development in a way that we can allow them to hit the footpath instead. In addition to it, we've already kind of talked about some scheming with it. We're, we're looking to make the, the main entrance of the property off of Luton Drive in an effort to push traffic back towards the Parkway. I know that I use the Parkway every day and it is a great asset as, as far as moving through Somerville quickly without moving through residential areas. And then lastly, like Mr. Andy said, continuing to be aware of the traffic as it relates to traffic impact analysis, which is a third party, it's actually the town will hire that, that consultant and then will provide information back to us. It is not a consultant hired by Mr. Andy or UIC. And so by doing that, it allows a third party then help govern and provide information to us as to what improvements are needed in the area. So again, I appreciate y'all's time and thank you.
Thank you.
Would you ask some questions like you thought you said?
The first person I have signed up on this agenda item for the public hearing is John Dubose of 107 Whitehall Road. And just a note, I'll be providing the three minute on my phone because I can't figure out how to pull it up here. So you'll hear a thing if it goes off. You've, you have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. I'll be brief. Three minutes? Okay. I'll be brief.
We've had a lot of traffic problems certain times of the day in Newington. I mean, three times a day, morning and evening, and then when school lets out. Several families have told me that they don't let their children walk to school and home because of the amount of traffic. Or if there's not a lot of traffic, then people can speed faster. So that's already a safety issue. This was some years ago, after the Berlin Myers was finally opened. People on certain parts of King Charles Circle now are seeing a lot more traffic. So we've got that to deal with. The land being in the county now is single-family residential. And I'm hoping that when it's annexed into the town, it will still be single-family residential. The reason being simply the number of vehicles. The engineers can calculate if you have 100 apartments or condos, how many people are you probably going to have? How many vehicles? How many vehicle trips a day? All this. Now, I don't know those formulas, but I know that if you have a five gallon bucket, you just can't put six gallons of water in it, no matter how hard you try. And our traffic bucket is pretty full right now without. Our traffic bucket is pretty full now before something is built there. So please keep it as single-family residential. Thank you.
Next, I have Ray D. Sadler of 14 Plantation Circle.
My wife and I have lived in Newington for 33 years. We raised our family there. Even my son and his wife have bought a home in Newington. They love the old neighborhood. It's well-established, family-friendly layout, community-oriented planning has helped the neighborhood hold its appeal and value in resale. It's attracted people to the neighborhood. I think it might be useful to have just a little background on Newington. Some of you may know this, some of you may not. Especially such a decision that's going to impact Newington's future. The neighborhood, Newington, is designed like a wheel, if you will, with some spokes. The top of the wheel was Phase 1. 80 homes were built there. Half-acre lots, single-family homes. This is back in the seventies. After Phase 1, development was sold to a partnership between John Murfree and Howard Prettyman. They bought it in 76, started building the rest of the wheel. The first piece of property they bought is the one we're talking about. So they obviously intended, they saw it as a good opportunity to continue their design with single-family homes. Unfortunately, that piece of property was owned by the partnership and right after they bought it, Mr. Prettyman died. Mr. Murfree kept building the rest of Newington. That particular property has been tied up and probate for years. Obviously, all the legal issues are resolved, or we wouldn't be talking about it right now. The entire neighborhood, the whole wheel, except for that one little vacant spot, now has 546 homes. It's well-designed, and there's one weakness in the design, and that's right across from that piece of property are two, not one, but two overcrowded elementary schools. It's probably unique in all of Dorchester, too, to have two elementary schools, large elementary schools, side by side. It's created problems over as long as I've lived in Newington with congestion for certain times of the morning, certain times in the afternoon. You just don't go there. I mean, unless you're taking your kid to school, you don't go there. You try using other, other exits. Well, now, we not only have that problem, but now we have the Luton exit off of Berlin Myers has attracted a little more traffic into the neighborhood. The problem has gotten worse. And now we're talking about adding a larger apartment complex directly across the street from where these two side-by-side elementary schools are located. It's not a good idea. The closest property to, thank you, sir. Okay, real quick, the closest property to that sold for $700,000, right next to that piece of property. That's good property for single-family homes, and that's what it ought to be used for. Thank you.
Next, I have Mike Ossler from 501 King Charles.
One of the issues involved here is when I move down here from the greater Cleveland area is finding that neighborhood. And when I look at our homes, and if you check the property tax, property tax is based on value of the home. Less value, less you pay. The only thing that can come out of having these new units is a decrease in our property tax, one. Two, having been a confident lawyer up in the Cleveland area, I've seen more developments come in. They rent a few of them. Can't get rid of them all. They go Section 8. I don't care who moves in, but they're not paying any taxes now. It's just not a good economic thing. I think Luton is good off of the Berlin G for the schools. Not so much for everybody else, because as long as I can think, I can't understand why anybody would think that's a shortcut to anywhere. But yeah, it's just keep our value, keep our quietness and everything as we purchased. Thank you. And, oh, oh, the biggest, if anybody ever went by my house, you know I get six feet of water in my backyard coming up on my deck every time a bird pees. I'm telling you, I don't know where you think all this parking lot from multifamilies is going to. That's a heck of a lot of water flow going to the Sawmill, which can't handle what they have now. And really, we don't know what's going to happen now to Berlin G. It's, can't make it any better, that's for sure. Thank you.
Next, I have Victoria Merritt of 20 Plantation Circle.
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Merritt, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I grew up in this neighborhood, the very one you're discussing this afternoon. As a child, I rode my bike to school, to the neighborhood pool, and up and down these quiet streets with my friends. It was the kind of childhood you desire for your own family. And now I love my childhood so much, I'm back living here in Newington, raising my three beautiful children in the same community that shaped me. I'm proud to serve as the coach of the local Newington swim team that feeds into the three Dorchester District 2 high school swim teams. And I care deeply about preserving the quality of life that makes this neighborhood special. That's why I'm here to express my strong concerns about the proposed annexation and multifamily development. Anyone who has driven through the area during school pickup knows just how severe the traffic backups are. Cars are lined up for blocks and wait times stretch into hours. This isn't an occasional inconvenience. It's a daily reality for families who live here. Additionally, as a longtime DD2 teacher and coach, I can attest to the fact that our schools are overcrowded. And adding an additional fam, multifamily housing will increase already large class sizes. Now that the Berlin G connector has been completed, the cut-through traffic from commercial vehicles and speeders only makes it worse, creating a dangerous environment for children, bikers, and pedestrians. In fact, the local high school cross-country teams train in our neighborhood because we're some of the only hills in the neighborhood or in the whole Somerville area, and there's not a lot of room for them to run anymore either. We've seen 18-wheelers drive through Newington, and as you can imagine, the quiet streets I grew up on, riding my bike on, no longer feel safe for my own children. Introducing a large-scale apartment complex into this fragile balance will only worsen the congestion. More cars, more commuters, more pressure on already strained roads and intersections. The infrastructure simply cannot support it. This is not about resisting growth. It's about responsible planning that respects the limits and character of our community. We are not prepared to absorb the kind of density without significantly harming the very fabric of our neighborhood. Please consider the lived reality of those of us who are here every day trying to raise our families in a safe and stable environment. I urge you to vote no on this annexation. Thank you for listening.
Next, I have Ed Kirsch of 102 King Charles Court.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your time. My name is Ed Kirsch. My family and I have lived in Newington since 2017, and I'm here today on behalf of the HOA and its residents. Just last week, when we noticed the sign posted for the annexation, we put out a petition for the public of the neighborhood to gauge their interest in the rezoning. As of this morning, we have over 650 signatures opposing the annexation. To be clear, this is not, to be clear, this is not just about the four-acre lot. That four-acre lot provides access to the 34 acres in, in back, albeit only seven developable. However, that land is currently landlocked by single-family homes, the Sawmill Branch Trail and Creek, and DOT restrictions of Berlin G and Luton Drive. It cannot support it. It is our stance that a multifamily development would be a poor decision and result in several negative impacts to the neighborhood's already overburdened infrastructure, its residents, and our safety. So let's talk about overburdened infrastructure. DOT road classifications, Newington's roads are local streets. They are designed to bring traffic to and from residences. However, the unintended consequence of the Berlin G Myers extension, although it has its benefits, is that it is now being used as a collector street to bring thousands of vehicles back and forth daily from Berlin G to Bacon's Bridge. Newington has already been actively working for six weeks with council, Public Works, and the Police Department to address these existing traffic and safety concerns. Since opening just six weeks ago, we've already had a severe three-car accident, a FedEx delivery driver tipped over in the neighborhood, multiple commercial vehicles cutting through and completing U-turns at Flower Town and Newington. I personally turned around a tractor trailer carrying nine vehicles on Smythe Drive because it could not make the left-hand turn at King Charles Circle during school pickup because the traffic was so backed up. There has been dozens of police citations issued as well in the last six weeks from speeders who are cutting through. A decision to annex and rezone could result in a 24% increase in daily traffic based on the published AATs, Average Annual Daily Trips of Multifamily Versus Single Family Homes. I provided a copy of where I pulled that data from DOT for you guys. We urge the board and staff to require an in-depth TIA traffic impact analysis at Luton Drive, Edisto Drive, and Lee Street, both during peak and non-peak school traffic hours prior to a decision being made. The second issue, DD2 district overcrowding, I know it's been talked about. I'll touch on that again. DD2 is currently facing significant overcrowding issues with several campuses exceeding 110% enrollment. This is based on 2023 rezoning and efforts and projections that Flower Town and Newington Elementary are both already at over-operating capacity. A decision to annex and rezone would result in 11 times more students based on SGR's student generation rates of multifamily versus single-family homes on those same lots. Again, I've included where that data is from. Closing, some closing comments. We understand and appreciate the owner's rights to develop the property and make a profit. However, considering the information presented, we believe that multifamily zoning would be a poor decision and result in several negative impacts. However, we are in favor and see the benefits of a Somerville annexation. My wife and I's lot is on that screen, and we personally annexed into Somerville for those benefits. We also think that subdividing would allow the owner a substantial profit, and it would, it would be conforming to the neighborhood. We appreciate everyone's time and the opportunity to present our concerns. We urge the board and staff to deeply consider what was presented, particularly close coordination with DD2 schools and local leadership of Flower Town and Newington Elementary, which is located directly across the intersection from the lot in question. Thank you for your.
Next, I have Kelly Roberts at 108 White Hall Road.
Good afternoon. Thank you again for your time from all of us. I am Kelly Roberts, resident of Newington for 29 years, and for many of those years, I've held a position on the HOA Board. Currently, I'm the Secretary. I believe that subdividing the parcel into several lots for a single-family home is a reasonable request and still allows for a substantial profit. Thanks for your time and appreciate your recommendation, recommendation for this parcel not to be zoned multifamily. Thank you.
I apologize if I pronounced this name incorrectly. Next, I have Yaden Smith at, okay, 73 King Charles Circle.
Hello, y'all. My name is Yaden Smith, and I am the third dot off of King Charles Circle from this development. My daughter is in fourth grade at Newington Elementary School. And it is a sketchy situation twice a day for her to get back and forth from school. Personally, I've been passed on a double yellow in my neighborhood, driving 25 miles an hour when somebody who's in a hurry passes me to get through the neighborhood as a cut-through. The kicker is, I buy apartments. I fix them up, make them more valuable. I love apartments. And I can totally see why this is something that somebody wants to do. But putting that many new residents on such a dangerous curve where traffic is already in a snarl, where children are walking back and forth to school, riding their bikes back and forth to school? I'm afraid we're going to read an obituary in the news for a 10-year-old girl. Thank you for listening.
Next, I have Larry Colette at 311 Kennel Work Drive.
Thank you for your time. It sounds like there's a little opposition here today. My name is Larry Colette. I'm the president of the HOA, and we, as a board, have a fiduciary duty to our homeowners. And one of those priorities is safety in our neighborhood. I, too, have young children. I have a 10-year-old, an eight-year-old, and a five-year-old. That if you've had kids, you know that you can tell them over and over and over again to look across the street before they cross, and they're just going to dart straight across. I had conversations with Mayor Touchberry, Chief Wright, and Sheriff Sam Donaldson a few weeks back, and they coordinated a collaborative traffic enforcement in our neighborhood on May 28th because of the concerns of traffic and speeders, as you have heard. And in that single day, in that short period of time, they issued 12 citations. If you've watched the news, you heard that there was an accident in that neighborhood, as it was shared. It was pretty bad. And so our concern as a board and also as a homeowner is to protect our littles that are in that neighborhood and our homeowners. And so we do oppose this annexation. Thank you.
Next, I have Bert Burzner at 126 Pipestone Drive.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I do not live in Newington, but I live nearby. But my main concern today is that that's been dated, not necessarily the coming and going on the school, but safety of the schools themselves. And so I think you've heard me say about overbuilding and overdevelopment on small pieces of land, which is a concern, I think, for all of our community. But I also think the very idea of putting a multifamily complex directly across from Flower Town Elementary is a safety issue. And so with that, I'm not opposed to the annexation, but I'm opposed to the zoning, which has been recommended. So thank you for considering that, and God bless you, as you were. So thank you for considering that and God bless you as you were.
Next I have not sure the first name, Tom Freeman? John Freeman? Jan, I'm sorry. Jan Freeman of one oh eight King Charles Circle.
Okay, thank you for listening to us. The one, I've lived in Newington for over forty years and I've seen many, many changes. One thing that hasn't been brought up is that we actually are a historic area. Newington Plantation was a plantation. Axtell's, the Booms, they were families that lived there a couple of hundred years ago. But what concerns me most is the safety, not only of the schoolchildren, but of people walking around in Newington. We've been told we cannot have speed bumps because there is a fire station nearby. I have, my husband and I have actually had police officers on motorbikes in our driveway catching people. And it's not hard because people speed through and you can, I can walk across to my mailbox and people will be speeding by me like, you know, it's the end of the world or something. But I think that putting an apartment building so close, which will create so much more traffic is not only a dangerous thing, but it's extremely foolish. And I hope that it doesn't come to pass. Thank you so much.
Next I have Justin Gothy at one hundred King Charles Court.
Well, first I'd like to congratulate whoever said my last name correctly. That's the first time that's ever happened. So congratulations, nicely done. Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Justin Gothy and I'm here to oppose the rezoning of Newington Plantation. Newington was built as a single-family community, quiet, safe, and family-focused. This proposed rezoning is out of character with that, with that community. Not to mention the, the increased traffic congestion, which several have, have, have mentioned. And the safety concerns that come along with that traffic. You know, the community is known for its walkable sidewalks, as was mentioned, cross-country team practices there. We'd like to continue to keep that ability. And, and we think that this, this, this rezoning to multifamily doesn't do that. It, it makes it more difficult. So I would respectfully ask you all to vote no to this and keep Newington single-family.
And the last person I have to speak is Sandy Richardson at one twenty-three Axtell Drive. Oh, sorry, I missed one that I'm gonna go back to in just a second.
Hi, I thank you so much. Appreciate being here and talking with you all, but I live at one twenty-three Axtell Drive, which is more like Axtell Speedway. People have driven down right into someone's front yard by knocking over their mailboxes and bedding and so forth. It is absolutely unbelievable the amount of traffic, the safety concerns. I've talked with a police officer a couple of times who has stopped people because of speeding, running through red lights. And I would just hope that you all would vote against this and I thank you very much.
And the one I missed, Cameron Ferguson of three fifteen King Charles Circle. Sorry, Cameron.
I wouldn't have been sad if I didn't get picked up with, but uh, you know, I'm glad everybody in Newington put this together and came up here and spoke on our behalf because it's definitely a safety concern. The traffic is a daily issue for sure. And then the flooding is also a big point in our neighborhood. So, you know, thanks for considering not doing this.
I do have some additional comments I will need to read into the record. So I will do that now for this agenda item. All right. This is from Sandra Chisholm of seventy-seven King Charles Circle. I will be unable to attend the meeting regarding the above-mentioned property, but would like to express my strong opposition to the development of this land. I believe that the land is in a flood plain, but at the minimum, it is prone to flooding during heavy rains. Before the Berlangie Myers Phase Three was approved, additional flood mitigation efforts had to be taken to prevent a negative flood impact to the homes in Newington Plantation. I am concerned that development of this property will undermine those flood mitigation efforts. Our property backs up to the proposed property. We have experienced flooded black backyards on numerous occasions of heavy rains. We live at seventy-seven King Charles Circle. Other homes in Newington have also experienced flooding. Because of the almost certain flooding potential if this land is developed, I am strongly opposed to it. Uh, next I have from Steve and Sarah Hudson at one oh six Kent Corp. I am writing to express my deep concern and strong opposition to the petition for annexation and rezoning of TMS number one four four zero 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 eight two located in Newington Plantation Estates from Dorchester County into the town of Somerville with a multifamily designation. As a resident of Newington Plantation, I can attest that our neighborhood streets are already overburdened due to significant cut-through traffic stemming from the Berlangie Myers Parkway Extension. This traffic has resulted in multiple accidents, ongoing commercial vehicle misuse, consistent speeding violations, and severe safety concerns for families and pedestrians. Our local roads were never designed to function as collector streets, yet that's what they've become. According to published AADT average annual daily trip date, a multifamily development would generate a twenty-three percent increase in daily traffic compared to a single-family home subdivided on the same lots, compounding the neighborhood's existing traffic and safety issues. Equally alarming is the location of two DD two elementary schools, Newington Elementary and Flower Town Elementary, directly in front of the proposed development. These schools are already operating over capacity with school pickup traffic now backing up hours after hours before dismissal. According to published, published SGR student generation rate data, a multifamily development would generate eleven times more students than single-family homes divided on the same lots, compounding the district's already critical overcrowding challenges. For these reasons, I strongly urge the Somerville Planning Commission and Town Council to move to deny this petition. Annexing and rezoning this parcel as multifamily will place an unreasonable burden on our infrastructure, escalate safety risks for residents, and expose the town to long-term public liability. Thank you for your time and service to our community. Uh, this is from Carly Park. Concerned DD two teacher and Newington resident. Dear council members, I'm writing to express my deep concern and strong composition to the petition for the annexation rezoning. As a resident of Newington, I can attest that, okay, this basically says the same thing that I just read, so I'm not gonna reread it, but that resident also opposes Harley Park. Um, then I have Mark Barker and Nancy Barker and Alyssa Barker. Dear town of Somerville, we have lived in Somerville close to thirty-five years. We have seen it change and develop dramatically over this time. This growth has brought our town many opportunities and also some challenges. One of these challenges is unmanaged growth and development in the wrong places. Our family thinks that developing multifamily homes is development in the wrong place. We live in the Newington neighborhood and have already seen a negative, very negative impact on our quality of life with the opening of the Berlangie Myers Extension. Our residential streets are no longer safe as way too many reckless drivers use it as a cut-through. Speeding and running stop signs are an everyday, everyday occurrence. This development will further increase traffic and most importantly, does not belong in a residential neighborhood. Multifamily units should be on major streets such as Dorchester Road, Old Trolley, Bacon's Bridge, et cetera, not inside a neighborhood. We are not opposed to development of this area and will, would fully support building single-family homes that would fit into Newington. I think that would be a much better approach for the town. The developer were probably not like this because their primary objective is to maximize profits and move on to the next project while the residents are left with all the problems. We kindly requested this proposal be rejected. Thank you in advance for listening to our perspective. This is from Jenna Ferguson, Ferguson of three fifteen King Charles Circle. The residents of our neighborhood rarely agree on much. But we are witnessing a miracle as the vast majority of our neighborhood agree that we do not want another multifamily development at the proposed property. Our schools are already full. The traffic issue has increased exponentially since the opening of the Berlangie Myers Extension. People fly through the neighborhood as a cut-through. I am constantly concerned about the safety of our children walking and riding their bikes to school in the neighborhood pool. We have already lost a lot of our green space that we loved with the extension. The noise levels have been noticeably increased since the opening of the extension. That green space was essential to padding noise and for our wildlife. I know green space is important to our town. I know because it is a, it was a very detailed process just to get a tree cut down in my front yard in Newington. Newington isn't. Newington is a neighborhood that is meant for folks that aren't interested in the cookie cutter mode-down development. We have plenty of those for folks that are interested in that. There are also already apartments and townhomes available near our neighborhood. We would love to see that property used for additional single-family homes that would expand our neighborhood and increase our property values. As someone that is currently trying to sell a home in Newington after just moving to a different one, we can use any help we can get in that department. I would ask for you to consider the desires of the many families that live in and love Newington versus the desires of the old-school Somervilleans to pad already full wallets. Thank you for your time and service to our community. I know it is often a position that receives more complaints than thanks. And Mr. Gene, would you like me to read your comments? Brisbane will read his own comments. Thank you.
She'll give you a copy of the letter. My name is Gene Brisbane. I live at two oh nine King Charles Circle. I happen to be a civil and structural engineer. Um, and so I'm very aware of development. That's how I make a living. I am not necessarily opposed to annexation. Obviously it's good for the town. But what I am opposed to is the zoning code, right? Multifamily. That lot north of that is multifamily. They have seven acres. They can develop multifamily on there. I have a height issue, much like this year's street project. The development height on that is fifty-five feet. The rest of Newington is G five and that's thirty-six feet. So if we go ahead and zone that also multifamily, we're gonna have a fifty-five foot up against a thirty-six foot. I don't really like that. I wish it was a forty-foot or something else. So I think a better, a better option for that would be to zone that G five R, just like the rest of Newington. That gives them a density of five per lot. And so they can do duplexes or something in there, multifamily, but just not something fifty-five foot or thirty foot or however tall they're gonna make it. Again, they have multifamily already zoned on the backside, right? And in my letter, you'll see I discussed the traffic also. I'm not gonna go over that. I didn't realize that I was thinking they were to come out on King Charles. That's why they wanted this property. If they're gonna come out on Luden, that's good. Traffic analysis only gives you what you need to do. It doesn't change traffic counts. Traffic counts are what they are. The traffic analysis says, okay, you gotta have turning lanes or whatever, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the numbers. The numbers are there. Other than that, Jesse will give you the letter. Thank you for your time.
I have one, one last letter to read from Dorian Wilson, who is a resident of Newington as well as a teacher. I'm also a military spouse who has lived across our great nation and who grew up in suburb area gone urban. I do understand the need of multifamily housing within a county. However, it's important to look at the specific negative impacts multifamily hasy will, will have on this specific location in Newington, right off the Sawmill Path and most importantly, across from not one but two elementary schools. First, the most obvious concerns include traffic and vehicles in and out of the neighborhood, which was built for single-family homes, and a large amount of traffic of not one but two elementary schools. Have you been down Dorchester Road where Hunley Park and Lambs Elementary are located and sat in traffic there? Also affects the safety of students and parents walking or riding bikes to school. There is no way around the increase of traffic that the one hundred and forty units of multifamily homes will cause in the area. Second, multifamily homes are susceptible to issues with drugs and gangs. And yes, you can tell yourself that will not happen, but it does. And I've seen it with my own eyes across this nation and all places I have lived. The following are areas of concern: increase is crime, right by not one but two elementary schools, as well as the two high schools who use Newington Plantation neighborhood for athletic purposes, plus the negative impact on Sawmill Branch Trail. This provides easy access to the path where there are hidden spots for meetups, drug deals, and then making the trail unsafe for people to use. Big property damage, damage to not one but two elementary schools as well as Sawmill Trail, thus making it unsafe and increasing the cost for maintaining and proving buildings and trail. Thirdly, the possibility of negative impact on your school district. Multifamily homes have the tendency to have residents who may move a lot. Students who move a lot consistently perform worse than students who do not move regularly. This would drive test scores down. Have you had collaboration with the school district? Our school district is doing their best for us, but there is a well-known fact that the other districts around us have the means to pay teachers at a much higher rate. Unfortunately, multifamily homes may bring unstable situations that our school district may not be able to sustain at this time. Finally, common sense that the attempting of a taking of single-family's own land and turn to multifamily's only land right in front of one, not one but two elementary schools, plus on a trail that provides sanctuary to residents of Dorchester County and Wyoming is not a great plan for Dorchester County. I believe that if the county chooses to turn the specific land from a single-family to multifamily, it will have a negative impact on the whole county. If the county chooses to continue with a multifamily zone, then the county is not looking out for the best interest of Dorchester County residents. Do you really wanna take a chance on a negative impact on two elementary schools? That is all I have for this public hearing.
We will close this public hearing. Our next public hearing is a request to rezone TMS number one three seven one one zero seven zero zero one located at four oh one South Magnolia Street, totaling approximately zero point five one acres owned by Camellia Cottage SCLLC from GR two general residential, two units per acre, to GR five general residential, five units per acre. Is the petition or present?
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Pye. My wife Rachel is here with me. We live here in downtown Somerville, have the pleasure and the privilege of that. Just a few blocks down the street here on West Richardson. Actually, we've been in the process of renovating our home there for about six years. Just recently got a Preservation Society Award for that work. In fact, in the spring, our house will be one of six homes on the inaugural parade of homes for fundraiser, basically for the downtown Somerville Museum. This property at four oh one, when we found out about it, we saw another unique opportunity to restore another home here in downtown Somerville. Those plans include removing the vinyl siding that was put on the house. We understand it was one of the first houses in Somerville to have vinyl siding put on it. We're gonna add handrails to the front porch, safety issue. It's about a five-feet drop off that porch. We're gonna be redoing the stairs and so forth. One of the things that was unique about this property that interested us was the, again, being on the corner in the back part of the property had never been developed, so we saw an opportunity potentially subdivide that. Currently, the zoning would only allow us to do two auxiliary dwellings. And so before we wholesale went in there and added two auxiliary dwellings, which would likely be a three-car garage with a two-bedroom apartment above it, and then another little cottage, which we enjoy having a couple of cottages on our property on West Richardson. So before we wholesale did that, we thought, you know, this probably is something we should put to our neighbors, even though we don't, we live about eight blocks from this area. We still consider downtown. These folks are neighbors. And so we said, okay, let's take a look at what it would take to subdivide this to where we could have another single-family lot there versus two auxiliary dwellings. So we have actually just the opposite of what y'all are dealing with in Newington. We don't want to add these auxiliary dwellings and we want to have a single-family home there. And it's not a foreign concept. If you look at four hundred South Gum and two ten East Third, that lot was subdivided in the same way in the fifties. The family that lives at two ten has been there for seventy years plus. We hope the same thing happens with this, with this lot. As far as the size of the lot that we're proposing, it's actually larger than both the lots there, three twelve and three sixteen Gum Street, which is literally just a opposite corner. And so, so yeah, that's basically where we're left. If, if the zoning is not changed, then we are stuck with the idea of two auxiliary dwellings. So I can't imagine anybody opposing that, but we're about to find out. So I appreciate your time.
Uh, first I have Peter Gorman of three thirteen South Magnolia Street.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's uh great to see this level of civic engagement this afternoon. The historic district neighbors appear once again uh before you to ask your help to protect our historic district neighborhood. We appreciate all you have done in the past. Unfortunately, we must ask again. We ask that you deny this application to spot rezone four oh one South Magnolia. While this may not fit the generic definition of a spot rezoning, which entails a dramatic change in use. Historic district neighborhoods require greater protection when rezoning because of the need to preserve the integrity and the historic architecture in the large lots. So rezoning from GR two to GR five, which would allow five units per acre as opposed to two units per acre is destructive to our neighborhood. GR five also allows townhouses. Can you imagine townhouses in our historic district? The core of our comprehensive plan attempts to accommodate growth by increasing density. But that formula is wholly inappropriate for GR two zoning, which the UDO states as quote, "The purpose of this district is to establish and preserve low-density residential areas to encourage and continue the stability and healthy environment for residential uses," end quote. The UDO Historic District Overlay is intended to further protect this zoning. Quote, "The town recognizes a historic, cultural, and architectural resources inherited of the town as among its most important assets." "It provides a mechanism to identify, protect, and preserve the distinctive historic and architectural characteristics of town." That is from our UDO and that's your uh guidance in this issue. So what we're seeing now is an effort to exploit our historic district charm under the banner of increasing density in the historic district to allow growth and affordable housing according to one town council person. The request before you says it meets this goal by subdividing and converting the historic district half acre into two lots with at least two ADUs and or short-term rentals. The applicant will tell you that there are other one quarter acre lots in our district, but these happened and were converted before the adoption of the UDO. This proposal has created shock and alarm on our east side of the historic district. The anger was palpable when we asked for signatures to oppose this plan. Somerville Preservation Society wishes to go on record as opposing this. Fifty-six neighbors have signed a petition asking you to deny this rezoning. And almost every home on the east side of the historic district has signed on to it. We just collected five more, so we're over sixty. I ask that the signature pages be submitted for the record. These commercial conversions undermine our sense of neighborhood by hollowing out our neighborhood relationships and replacing them with constant influx of transience that create noise, traffic, crash, and parking problems. And we ask that you deny this permit. Thank you.
Next I have Chelsea Bosich at one oh two Hughes Street.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Chelsea Bosick. I'm a resident of the town of Somerville. I live right at Five Points intersection, so close by. I walk downtown, run downtown every single day. Um, I'm not against growth, new development, or even short-term rentals since they come a whole lot. Uh, I believe when done right, these ventures can bring value to our community. But what I am against is the attempt by LLCs and outside investors to spot rezon properties simply to maximize profits while circumventing the very ordinances this town put in place to protect its character that we all love so much. This kind of selective enforcement sets a really dangerous precedent. If this board allows spot rezoning in this one case, you open the floodgates because what you do for one, you must do for all. And at that point, what happens to Flower Town in the Pines? I previously managed short-term rentals in the Park Circle area. And I saw firsthand how weak oversight and inconsistent enforcement can erode a neighborhood's identity. Somerville deserves better than that. I urge you to consider the long-term consequences, not just the application in front of you tonight. Um, one thing I did want to mention, if he does get uh the split of the lots, he can still put two, two ADUs on that property. So he gets two houses and two ADUs. So he still gets what he wants regardless. Thank you.
Next I have Greg Reichert at seven oh three South Magnolia.
The chairman sits in the mayor's seat. I'm going to pass. But I'm going to echo everything I've said. Historic district has been set with integrity for GR two. Change it, lose integrity.
Next I have Thomas Stanford at four oh four South Magnolia Street.
All right, yes, yeah. Had prepared comments set up, but it's mostly been covered. So I just want to point out the historical side of this. Um, if I remember correctly, that's a single fact. The people who live there, it's been in the same family since I believe the house was built. At which point there were exactly twenty-six states in the United States. The subdivision to which he referred, uh, just to the east of him. At that point, there were only forty-eight stars on the flag and these, that was a before I was born. Okay, so it's quite a while ago. It's to allow a more recent precedent means that it would probably propagate further subdivisions and take away the unique feel of the place, uh, the whole neighborhood and open up floodgates for what I would consider to be the worst case scenario, which is where you break these properties up, long rectangles into squares and you have to have cut-throughs and it really would destroy the overall feel. Uh, I know that when they purchased this, they had to be aware of these zoning regulations. And living in an historic district can be a pain in the neck sometimes. Uh, it's difficult to make sure you maintain the integrity of the house. We know that. Uh, we've had our problems. Um, but it's worth it. It really is worth it. So thank you very much.
Next I have Shannon Sutton of four oh four South Magnolia Street.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is Shannon Sutton. My husband and I live at four oh four South Magnolia Street, the little dot across from the orange square rectangle. Um, that was Grandma Amy's house. That's how we knew that house. She welcomed us to this neighborhood when we moved here. Um, there's been much talk today. I'm not going to repeat the same things about the subdivision and subdividing homes and traffic increases, but I do want to say that my husband and I have, um, our work has required us to move a lot. We've lived on all three coasts. We've lived in the middle of America. We've lived in two other countries. We've lived in high-rise condominiums and on rural land and then old and new houses. Even mixed-use buildings that's being built right now in downtown Somerville. All those have their place and we love living in all those places. But when it came time to decide where we were going to retire, I remembered visiting family here in the Low Country as a child and said, let's look around this area. And we picked Somerville. We picked an eighteen fifty's cottage house that needed restoration in the old historic district of Somerville to make our final home. We did so because we instantly loved the feeling of balance Somerville was clearly working hard to maintain. The livability of supporting services and businesses and community events and green spaces while maintaining the charm and character of this town. Rezoning Grandma Amy's house to GR five would begin the upset of this balance by creating more density than is acceptable for the current infrastructure of the roads, unconnected sidewalks, older utilities. And we continue to degrade the look and feeling of the historic district. It would additionally bring more noise and light pollution to the area. Growth is necessary, but the historic district must be preserved or you will lose the thing that make people fall in love with Somerville. Is a political, in a political time, that is difficult to find two people that agree. I think that was another point somebody else made. We can't even agree how much sugar is appropriate in our sweet tea. You have a room full of people who agree on this. No rezoning for four oh one South Magnolia. I urge the members of the planning commission to represent the interests of the neighbors today. Think about how, if approved, this would change the feel of our street, South Magnolia Street and the surrounding area forever. The neighbors will be the ones that will live with the consequences of your decisions today. Thank you for your time.
Adrian Quist of one oh nine Reynolds Road.
Good afternoon. Planning Commission members. My name is Adrian Quist. I came to Somerville sixty years ago and I've seen a few changes. Some for the good, some for the not so good. I feel like right now that I'm going to use a term that I used the other night at the town council meeting. I feel like we have a infestation of termites. And that means we are being dealing with overdevelopment. And it's up to you folks as well as the town council to be the best control people to keep everything under control. I do appreciate. We do appreciate your denial of the uh zoning change of opposition in regard to the battling breakfast businesses. And we hope that you consider opposing the zoning change for the historical district in regard to the setback. It's a very, my question is, why do we have a historical district? Why do we have a preservation society? Why do we have a UDO that was established several years ago under a lot of hours and a lot of consideration, a lot of studies? And now there is a lady on the town council that wants to keep changing these ordinances. And I say, don't let it happen. And the reason I say this, we elected the members of council to protect and preserve Somerville. Somerville is very dear to me and very dear to most people that are here. And I want to keep it that way. So we are opposed, I don't know how many more times we have to come here. I don't live in the district, but Somerville is very dear to me. And we are getting very frustrated to keep, to try to protect Somerville. So I hope each one of you listen to what I have to say. And I echo what Mr. Mr. uh Gorman was saying. I echo what he had to say about these zoning changes because I feel like when we start changing the zonings, it's better more than a betrayal to the people in Somerville. And that shouldn't happen. So thank you for your time.
Next I have Trevor Blaze of four oh eight South Magnolia Street.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Trevor Blaze. I live at four oh eight South Magnolia that I've owned for the last five years, uh, which is just across the street from four oh one. We moved to the historic district to raise our family, establish our roots and belong to a community. I'm strongly against allowing four oh one South Magnolia to subdivide and allow the current zoning to change from GR two to GR five, which would allow short-term rentals. And would also drastically change the characteristics of our historic district. Um, I am a carpenter by trade. I started off working downtown Charleston in the historic homes, which attracted me to the historic district. I get it. I get what they're trying to do. I now work in the new home construction industry. I see the potential for it. But then there's the instance of we've got the bar in the historic district. I've got to go before in order to change any alterations of the outside of my home. I don't understand how someone can come in and be able to change the entire characteristics and alter the look of our entire neighborhood. Um, I've got kids. I've got an eleven-year-old and a five-year-old. I don't like the idea of not knowing who my neighbor is going to be next week, next month. Short-term rentals bring crime, noise, pollution, traffic. They've all said it. Um, besides that, I mean, we've got something special in the historic district. People come to the park down the road for a house to walk, to take pictures, proms, all this. We don't need anything extra. We're good. Thank you.
Ms. Debbie, I apologize how I pronounced your last name. Next I have Ms. Debbie, Debbie Thompson.
You're close. Um, it's Debbie Tomcheck. Um, good afternoon. I'm speaking to formally express my strong opposition to the proposed historic district rezoning of four oh one Scythe Magnolia, which was recently purchased by Camilla Cottage SCLLC. The applicant makes a comparison in his request to a similar-sized property that was subdivided in the early nineteen fifties. Should we repeat past mistakes? That was before Somerville formed a zoning board. It was before the Board of Architectural Review existed and it was before the area was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Today, we have protections in place precisely to prevent further fragmentation that could compromise the cohesive charm and the historic value that our community has worked so hard to preserve. This property on South Magnolia was a cherished single-family home owned by one family since eighteen forty. It sits within a district intentionally and carefully zoned to preserve its unique historic charm. The current GR two zoning designation reflects a community vision rooted in stewardship, scale, and preservation. Values that have made this neighborhood a cultural landmark in our town. It's troubling that Mr. Pie, a locally managed rental business, owns one, acquired this property with full knowledge of the zoning regulations, only now to seek upzoning that serves only one clear motive, financial gain. This proposal does not reflect a desire to restore or preserve a piece of our shared history. Instead, it threatens to disrupt the character and the integrity of our neighborhood, one which is built on tradition, cohesion, and careful planning. I urge the commission to deny this rezoning request and affirm the town's commitment to preservation, fairness, and the integrity of its planning process. Thank you very much for your attention with this matter and for serving our community.
Next I have Karen Healy of two ten East Richardson Avenue. And James Healy.
I found the pen last time we were here. Thank you, Planning Commission, for what you do. You have a really important task. My name is Karen Healy. I live in the historic district on East Richardson Avenue. We were offered some choices, which is interesting, I think, and I'm going to kind of quickly overlap. We are here for a zoning request from another LLC on South Magnolia. Although the planning commission denied the first LLC's request, legal issues are still unresolved, which I think it's safe to say makes neighbors uneasy about another LLC seeking rezoning with the goal of short-term rentals. The home at four oh one South Magnolia Street is rated a number two notable in terms of its historic relevance, a number one rating. A number one rating is the highest. Changing the zoning would allow possible subdividing into quarter-acre lots, which in my opinion would damage the historic character of this number-two historic-rated home and the neighborhood. We are already dealing with the effects of short-term rentals at the other LLC on South Magnolia. A family doesn't live there, a retired couple doesn't live there, an eccentric cat lady doesn't live there. Strangers come and go. In Columbia, there was recently a deadly shooting at an Airbnb in the Elmwood Park Historic Neighborhood. Their city council is now considering a moratorium on short-term rental permits in residential zoning districts. There are other parts of Somerville already zoned and ready for this kind of development. Rezoning this property on South Magnolia would be a form of gentrification that will only continue. Incidentally, there was a miscellaneous item proposed at town council last week by our district representative to reduce the setbacks for building on small lots, like quarter-acre lots. These requirements, I'm sorry, these requests will just continue. Please deny this rezoning request.
Next time we'll get our things together. Uh, good afternoon, and again, thank you for hearing us today. The zoning change for 401 Magnolia may not be technically considered spot zoning, but as previously said, for our historic district and other residential neighborhoods, it'll lead to changing the dynamics of our historic district, allowing smaller lots, higher density, and the franchising of the historic district for commercial gain from short-term rentals and the loss of our community. As you can see by the turnout tonight in response to the zoning change for 401 Magnolia in the Crestwood area, this is not what the historic district wants or needs. Well, you are only concerned with the zoning change. This zoning change to GR5 would lead to more short-term rentals, loss of homes for residents and neighbors, change to the core dynamics of our historic district, which is the reason why many of us, as said by others, intentionally moved to the historic district to retire. This is not what we envisioned for the historic district when it was placed on the National Historic Register in 1974. Allowing this rezoning to GR5 sets a far-reaching precedent for the spread of smaller lots, higher density, and short-term rentals throughout historic district and our other neighborhoods. Please consider what other communities are facing now with uncontrolled spread of short-term rentals and zoning in growing communities such as locally Park Circle, as we've heard already. Park Circle is a community of short-term rentals. No one lives there. Reading the newspaper, we're shown that all growing communities are facing these issues created by uncontrolled spread of short-term rentals, loss of homes, loss of neighborhoods, and loss of community. We have also seen from ongoing issues with other short-term rentals in the historic district that the town of Somerville does not have the staff and infrastructure to inspect and monitor code enforcement in the short-term rental arena. This will only get worse if this changes. Please consider to deny the GR5 rezoning. Thank you.
Scott Bronner of 400 South Gum.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is Scott Bronner. My wife and I, Janine, live at 400 South Gum Street. Uh, we feel that the historic district has been preserved for the most part rather well. However, the commercial creep and conversion of historic homes into short-term rentals has us extremely concerned for the character of historic downtown Somerville. To be clear, we do not necessarily take issue with the subdivision of the existing one-half-acre lot into two residential lots specifically, but the accompanying request for spot rezoning of these lots into a much higher-density zone to enable the building and subsequent short-term rental of the structures by an absent landlord for the sole purpose of income and profit. This is clearly a commercial endeavor and not appropriate for a residential zone district. The character of the historic district is largely defined by the large setbacks and low-density, beautiful historic homes dotted throughout the area. We feel that converting homes into short-term rentals in the historic district subverts the intention of zoning an area as low-density, single-family residential. And spot zoning a small number of lots into a higher-density zone is further subversion. Given the stated intention that the new owners of the property, LLC specifically intend to subdivide the lot for the purpose of building short-term rental structures in a commercial endeavor, we respectfully request the planning commission deny these requests. Thank you for your time.
Tanya Turley, 207 South Magnolia Street. Okay, thank you. Jean Thrower, 210 East Third South Street. Scott. Oh, is she coming? Okay, I'm sorry. My bad.
Let me say that this is a surprise for me to come up here.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion. I, uh, she didn't know that I signed her up. I just thought she would enjoy accompanying me. This is Ms. Somerville from 1958. My family has lived at 210 East Third South Street seventy-four years. My grandfather built the house and bought the land from the Locklairs in 1951. Is that right? Fifty-one. And, uh, we are largely in agreement with Peter's opening remarks and would like to oppose the rezoning. We feel like the characteristics of the UDO were hard-fought at the time. And if we're not going to follow the specifications that were set out this time, then, you know, why did we do it to begin with? We advocate for the historic district that the family nature and we've all seen what unchecked growth has done to the rest of the county. And the historic district is the one area that is worth preserving. It's part of the magnetism of the city of Somerville. We have a really unique thing here, and I think it's worth preserving. Anything else?
Well, I was born here. I graduated from Somerville High School. And I went to St. Luke's Lutheran Church. And I was married there. He was christened there. And, you know, it's just, I can remember, I know this is kind of off the beat, but I remember being able to walk to school and not worry about it and not think, my father would pick me up and take me, but there were times that I had to walk because he had other things he needed to do. And it was very safe, and now it's not that way. And I'm really, I'm really sad about it. I was eighty-nine in last month. And, I mean, I can't believe that I'm gonna have to contend with cars. I mean, it's a nice lot in between. However, there will be no place to park. It will, I mean, unless they just do it on the street. I don't know. But anyway, that's all I have to say. I, thank you for coming.
I do have a couple items to read, a couple emails to read into the record for this one, and then that's all I have. This is from Lassie Murray of 211 South Gum Street. This email is to officially go on record and opposing this change. Our neighborhood seems to be constantly in the battle to keep our residential zoning intact. We live in this neighborhood. It's a quiet historic neighborhood. If this rezoning is approved, it's going to open the door for many more changes. Please deny this request. And then the last is from Laura S. and Bertie R. Crosby Jr. Regarding the rezoning request at 401 South Magnolia, my husband and I are opposed. The historic district is surely under attack today. It, of course, does not help that the councilwoman, who was elected by people living in the historic district to represent the historic district, has done just about everything in her power to commercialize the area. I think the definition of spot rezoning should be this and only this. The property is rezoned for the sole benefit of the owner, whose scheme will enable him to make money, and the rezoning is to the detriment of adjacent homes and neighborhoods. It should be denied. There is nothing positive about two ADUs, short-term rentals, crammed on a quarter-acre residential lot connected with strings of fish camp lights. Adding to the problem is that the town GDO is not enforced. Case in point is a B&amp;B in town that has operated out of compliance for years. It's not like the town doesn't know that. Even now, the town claims since March to be requiring the pseudo-property owner to obtain a four percent tax rate from the county. That will never happen, and the town is allowing dual ownership of the B&amp;B under an LLP, which is legal under state law. If the town doesn't know that already, it should call the county assessor's office. This business could be shut down, but of course it isn't. Political favoritism and cronyism will be the demise of the historic district. The goal of GR2 zoning is to preserve low-density residential areas. The developer of this property seems to believe that his rezoning attempts were a done deal since he offered the neighbors the choice of another house or two ADUs on the property. We ask that you deny this application to rezon.
That's it. And we will close the public hearing. Move to new business, no street names. And the next item is a petition by Rutherford Prittiman Smith and Virginia Prittiman Driver to annex TMS number 1440000082, located at Luden Drive and King Charles Circle, totaling approximately 4.26 acres. Currently zoned TRM, Transitional Residential District in Dorchester County, and requested to be zoned MFR, Multi-Family Residential, following annexation into the town of Somerville's municipal limits, said Council District 5. Jesse, can you briefly tell us what Transitional Residential District is?
Uh, my understanding of the Transitional Residential District is that it's the county's district that's supposed to be kind of between the more developed areas and the rural area of the county. I'm not sure why it's in the middle of Newington, but it does have a one-acre lot minimum size limit to it, is my understanding.
All right. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion on this?
Oh, um, hold on. We do have one who needs to recuse herself.
Oh. Oh, all right. Thank you very much. Do we? Do I have a motion? For the sake of discussion, I will move that, uh, we for the sake of discussion, I'll move that we accept this and forward it to town council to approve. Do I have a second? Purposes of discussion, I have a motion and a second. Now, discussion.
Could I ask the developers?
Yes, you may.
Yes, sir. I understand the information we are providing.
That you were going to use eleven acres?
We're only using thirty, roughly thirty percent of the total thirty-eight acres.
Right, there's thirty-seven acres and twenty-six are wetlands or flood plain or whatever. You're not using.
That's correct.
So that comes out to roughly being eleven. So how many units are you gonna put on the eleven?
What we're estimating is one hundred and eighty units.
Okay. Uh, how many bedrooms do these units have?
As a general rule, they're one and two bedrooms. And I say as a general rule, very heavy in ones and twos. Most of our demographic that we target are young professionals and seniors that are transitioning. So we don't, and I can't honestly tell you that we don't ever have children at our projects because that would be a lie, but I can tell you that they're, they're few. They are Class A apartments. And I think there's a need for apartments in Somerville.
How many stories will this be?
Three stories.
Three stories?
We call it garden-style walk-up.
Right, so that's three. You won't need elevators. Now you have one hundred and eighty units on eleven acres. How much of the soil now are you gonna cover over and make it impervious?
I don't know.
I just want a number. You know, you have eleven acres.
Kevin, I don't think they're that far along. They've only conceptually done a site plan.
Okay, because that whole area is a big flood area. If you're setting up nothing more than a sluice to run all the water down to the sawmill, we didn't have a big rain the other day, but the water came up very high.
Yes, sir.
And they spent all this time before your plans to redo the sawmill so it wouldn't flood. This seems like it's going to add to that problem.
As a general rule, once we're done developing, we, our runoff as a general rule is less than when we started.
Sorry, you can't convince me of that because of this look. Moving on. How many parking spaces?
One and a half per apartment.
So two seventy?
Yes.
Actually, two seventy-two. So two hundred and seventy-two in and out. You're gonna go in and out on Luden?
That's our main entrance, yes, sir.
Audience, can you please allow them to speak without interrupting?
So Luden is gonna be made in and out. You're gonna put a traffic light there?
If DOT requires it, we are obviously gonna have a traffic study. If they require it, then we absolutely will. Or turning lanes or whatever it is that they require.
I feel bad for DOT. They just finished that project. Now they're gonna have to rip it all up again for you.
Pay for it, so, yeah, we have to pay for it.
And when we do the traffic study, Jesse, do we tell them what time of year to do it? Because if you do in the summer, it's going to come up.
With the location next to the schools, yes, they will need to do it during when school is in town.
Okay. Every, every traffic study done in the town of Somerville, every traffic study done in the downtown of Somerville, the traffic counts have to be taken during school.
Okay. Um, in the past, with the high density of such a project, I have opposed in other areas in town. I'm gonna continue that. I think where you're putting it is a huge impact to that area. It's a single-family neighborhood. Two bad years ago, they didn't continue doing all of the Newington, finishing that off. Lot of cars, you talk young professionals, in and out, all of that. If you're running DoorDash, I'm sure you're gonna make a fortune on that place. They'll be in and out all night long. So, uh, thank you for that. Um, I'm outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further discussions? Harry Dunn, we have a motion on the floor to approve this and send it to town council. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Next, we have a request to rezone TMS number 1371107001, located at 401 South Magnolia Street, totaling approximately 0.51 acres, owned by Camelia. owned by Camelia Cottage, Cottage, SCLLC from GR2 General Residential of two units per acre to GR5 General Residential, five units per acre. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I move to deny this request for rezoning in the historic district.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I would like to thank the people from the historic district. I agree with you. I don't think we need to rezon. You already know what you had for rezoning. Uh, the preservation group looked into it. This is a change on one corner of one lot, and it's called a slippery slope. So, thank you very much.
And I would like, I would like to thank every one of you for the citizen participation. It means a lot.
Anyone else?
Jim, can I, can I clarify something real quick in regards of what the two different zonings allow? Because I feel, I feel like there has been some confusion with that. So both GR2 and GR5 are, are single-family detached zoning districts. Uh, GR5 does allow for townhomes if GR5 covers the entire block, which would not be, be the case in this, in this instance. Um, the bedhome lot size is the main difference between the two. GR2 has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. GR5 has a minimum lot size of 8,500 square feet. Um, and then as far as short-term rentals go, um, in order to build ADUs, it does have to be an owner-occupied property. And also in order to operate a short-term rental, it has to be an owner-occupied property. And for GR5, it actually also has to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception. So I just want to clarify that. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There's no further discussion. I'll call for the question. We have a motion to deny and a second on the table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The ayes have it, and you have a no.
I do not have anything under miscellaneous.
No miscellaneous.
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
1958, I was